You know, department leaders and directors as requested. And I will just say that is never, it's a plan, it's like a roadmap, but it's never really an expectation that's hard budgeted item. But they're asking for our opinion as directors, you know, what we foresee in the upcoming five years. And typically, it's, there's never enough money to address all of the capital needs that are out there. So there's usually a discussion, it's kind of a fluid conversation. So this year, a roof may have to get priority, or a gym floor may have to get priority, or hopefully, computers may have to be a priority, just depending on the mix of things. So that's kind of the background there. But yes, Mr. Kennedy, we do feel like we're approaching that point in time where we need to think about, you know, computers. Our current computer fleet was implemented during the 2010-2011 school year. So if you think about that now, we're approaching five years. And so certainly, they're usable. I was telling Mr. Blocker the other day, you know, I could probably have just about any computer, you know, I wanted on my desk. I purposely have the computer that was purchased when our staff computers were purchased, so I know how it's performing, what it's doing. And I can tell you, it's functioning, getting a little slower, but it's functioning. So if we had to, we could live, you know, with our computers probably another year. It's one of those expenditures though, you either pay me now or pay me later. And so it is beginning to impact our teachers and how they function. A computer is a mission-critical piece of equipment, you know, for them. They use it daily, they depend on it at work and at home to do school-related work. And so we're seeing an increase because of the age, a number of similar failures just because of age, you know, hard drive failures, motherboard failures, screen failures, keyboard failures. And so that becomes more of an expense to the district, you know, to maintain those. So, in an ideal world, I think, you know, we would try to replace those staff and teacher computers. Absolutely not critical, so as you look at all the needs that are out there that need to be funded by capital, you know, certainly that's something we could discuss. But I'm suggesting that if it's not done this year, it's gonna need to be done, you know, pretty soon, in my opinion.
Are you, Dr. Gettys, have you looked at anything to mitigate the cost of purchasing them, you know, using anything that we currently have?
That's a very good question that I meant to address, and I'm glad you just mentioned that idea. Basically, you know, we have a computer infrastructure that includes keyboards, monitors, docking stations for the notebook computers, you know, a lot of peripherals that just are part of the whole thing. And so what we would do to mitigate costs is purposely and intentionally look at a notebook computer that could replace the existing notebook computer and still be compatible with that docking station and keyboards and monitors, because there's nothing wrong with those. And so definitely, that will be part of our strategy. And the same for desktop computers. Keyboards are fine, you know, monitors are fine, I mean occasionally, we have, you know, an issue, repair, replacement. But we would just plan on replacing the CPU part, the main part. Keep all the peripherals that we can keep to, you know, save some money. So, and I, you know, I don't want to get too specific and put myself in a precarious position, but I think we could probably come under that number that I provided to Mr. Blocker for planning purposes, you know, by looking at specs or, you know, looking at some different aspects of that. And so, and then I'm not the person to talk to about that, but I guess there also is the possibility of leasing, so you can, you know, spread that cost of those devices out. So I understand there's needs out there, but that's why that was in that capital plan, and certainly open for discussion in terms of the, all the priorities that are out there.
That was the 1.9 million or so, was it?
Yes, sir.
And now, just so I know too, that replacement was for how many teachers, was that across the board?
Yeah, across the board, roughly 1,250 teachers and roughly 350 staff, all their computer devices.
And when we first purchased the computers for the teachers, did we do it all at one?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Did we all at the same time?
In 2010, 2011, we did it across the board, kind of wall-to-wall computer replacement, because we had leased all of those devices, so...
And maybe you can explain to Mr. Dot too. One time, we had unfortunately fleets that were not, we were rotating at different times, and it was very difficult to manage because of that.
It was got the hodgepodge.
It was a hodgepodge, because we could, you know, we purchased, you know, varying amounts at different years, and so we had a lot of different ages of devices out there. As Mr. Mullen mentioned earlier, if you caught it, we had some quite old devices that were approaching seven, eight years. And he was exactly right, we had software running on those devices that was incompatible because it was so old, and we couldn't really function the way we needed to function. So, yeah, we were fortunate in 2010, 2011 to be able to do a mass upgrade of those computers. And then our plan was, in an ideal world, there was a leasing arrangement, and so it didn't cost us a lot of money to do that at the time, three-year lease. And so in an ideal world, funding would have been there, and we could have renewed that lease, replaced those devices, and so had new computers started year four. And so when capital money started reducing and things started dropping out, we had, we changed that plan and bought that lease out.
Well, we still, I think we still, Mr. Blocker can answer this better, we still made out on that deal by buying those computers, because we got them at a really low rate. We were able to extend ourselves maybe two more years, Mike?
Exactly.
And that two more years was able to keep us from having to make that another huge investment at the time where we didn't have the funds to do it. So the buyout, even though we intended to just go into a new lease, was still a better option than not at the time.
And as I said, they're functioning. It's just one of those things, kind of like buses or any other capital feature like that. Sooner or later, it's like the roof, you know, you could go a certain amount of time, pretty soon it's gonna have to be replaced, so...
And then you have a little tornado that comes through, and then you're glad that it's already in your budget.
So, any questions about that? I just think it's gonna be a point of discussion. You know, we could think of a hybrid arrangement. Maybe we could do teacher computers this year and, you know, staff computers next year or, you know, a following year. So, or maybe you decide, I hate to phase in, because then you get inequity, inequity, you know, phase in. But there's, there's options we can discuss, so...
The concern is, goes back to, I think, the one thing too, and that's whatever you do, that you're not having the point that we had before, where we had one fleet that could talk to these set of computers, but they couldn't talk to that set of computers because we had year, rotational years that were so far off. So that would be my only concern. I would almost say that, you know, if your recommendation is we could delay, then I'd say do it all at one year, then to try and do it the thing. And that, and I know you're still can have that conversation, but...
There's a maintenance fee too. I mean, nobody saves the maintenance money by doing a lease as opposed to buying a computer.
Yes, we do, yeah. And I will say too, during the period of that first three years lease time, you know, that warranty's covered. And so, you know, they send people out, parts don't cost us money. So now we're on our own, and so that's costing us, you know, more to sustain those devices, so...
And you know, just again, to support the buyout at the time, there was not a lot of technology updates from the time that we began the lease to the time that we bought it out. We're getting ready to have some big updates in the next 12 months hardware-wise. You've got a Windows operating system that is gonna be going from, our current fleet is a Windows 7, they're gonna be going to a Windows 10. And we've got, probably the biggest one is the Office suite that currently we have it at 2010. It's gonna be going to, a new release is the Office 2016, which is releasing this fall. So that's gonna be a massive difference, because there's already been a release in between it. So, and as always, Doctor, I know you put together that, you know, addressing of that and going in that, so...
Yeah, unfortunately, the reality is, technology is expensive to sustain in an organization our size, and it's, you know, we don't get a lot of additional funding from, time has to here, the government to do that, so... All right, I want to start by talking about our one-to-one initiative. I like this slide that's up there, because it reflects some of the great things our students are doing in our elementary and middle schools. I will say that in February, Dr. Steve Neely, who's Bureau Chief of the Department of Academic Standards and Instructional Support, Department of Education, came to visit Citrus County. And you know, his, before he started his road trip, he was directed by, you know, the Commissioner and others up there to look at exemplary districts. He visited two districts out of the whole state. Broward County was one, in terms of exemplary classroom technology, and Citrus County was the second. So we were really proud to host him that day. There's a few pictures of some of the activities that were going on. And the cool thing about it is, this was kind of planned very late with schools, so they didn't have a lot of time and didn't really work up a dog and pony show. This is what happens, you know, on a daily basis in our schools, so I thought that was really pretty cool. Reminding us about this one-to-one initiative, it's really about student academic success and engaging them in, you know, challenging, rigorous curriculum. Another big feature we can't lose sight of, it's facilitating that transition to digital curriculum. And I'll just reiterate, you know, we're mandated by law to spend X amount of dollars now on digital content, and so that is what we're doing when we do instructional materials adoptions. And so we've met that 50% mark, and then some, in terms of digital materials. I will tell you in kind of an interesting and exciting way, next year, 2015, 2016, our middle schools will be 100% digital in their English and English arts curriculum. So we adopted a few years ago that Hope Mifflin collections for that, those grade levels, and we got this digital transition plan, year one, year two, that print materials associated with it, year three is digital only. So we are, you know, we're there. Now, this is maybe a little bit confusing, but I'll walk us through this slide. Basically, I can't believe where the time's gone. But you can see 2012, 2013, we began a pilot at seventh grade at Citrus Springs Middle School. Boy, my cursor's not staying up here. And then the following year, 13, 14, we expanded to eighth grade at Citrus Springs Middle School. We expanded to all seventh grade at the other middle schools, as well as a pilot at Custer Road Primary, and a pilot at Macanto Primary School, and then Crest. Now, we're, this year, we expanded to fifth grade at all of our elementary schools. I'll remind you that elementary schools are not take-home devices like they are at middle and high school, secondary or middle. And then we expanded to all the eighth grade at the rest of our middle schools. And so basically, from the very beginning up to this point, if you look at the very bottom of that third column, you'll see that we're roughly at 25% now of our students have one-to-one devices. 2015, 2016, the plan is to expand to basically one grade at each level, fourth grade at elementary school, sixth grade at our middle schools, so that means that'll be 100% one-to-one, ninth grade at our high schools. Now, that's a big undertaking, it's a big number, and I'll be honest, the plan is, these won't be all deployed day one when students come back for school in 15, 16, it's gonna take some time. I was, I'll just remind, when we came out with our original plan a few years ago, one of the hopeful things was to have some additional staff to support these devices. And I'm, you know, a little concerned about adding that number this coming year, as according to the plan, that's almost double what we had, you know, this past year and this current year. And this current year is really, we begin to see the impact, you know, on just everybody in terms of managing, deploying, managing, and running those devices. But then you extend that on out, certainly we have flexibility how we would approach that in the last couple of years. But one scenario is 10th level, 12th grade, 16, 17, and then carrying it on out, 17, 18, the remainder of our classrooms.
Dr. Gettys, and at the elementary level, I'm talking about hardcover books or traditional books, are there any take-home books really for, that students?
No.
I don't think there is.
Not in several subjects, no, other than library media, but there's, I'm not aware of any subject.
But not any textbooks really?
Textbooks that...
There's no real take-home ones, Mr. Clutter? I mean, I know there's like pull-outs and things like that, but...
We have a textbook for every one of the subjects at the elementary level.
Most of them are like disposable pull-out?
Yeah, I know the Nat Geo book for science was a hard-bound book, but...
And the reading book, I think, isn't hard, but it stays at the, in the school.
I believe so.
So that's, so really, the idea of a non-take-home at the elementary really mirrors though the fact that we don't have a take-home textbook per se at the elementary level.
Yeah, I'd like to get some information to bring back to you before I basically go off about the elementary.
Okay. And with you, I value that, I appreciate that, so...
So that's kind of the big picture broad brush. The reality is, and this is a little bit reiteration, all seventh, eighth graders currently, all fifth graders, Crest. We've got small pockets in our high schools, and then we would, over 4,000, you know, roughly 4,700 iPads deployed to this point. And so as I said, our plan would be to extend to fourth, sixth, and ninth grades this coming year. Now, this is the budget that would be reflective of extending to those grades roughly, and I have specifics behind each of these numbers in, you know, my budget plan here, but you can see what would be expanded for devices themselves, carts, cases, and other things related to that format, roughly 1.7 million. Which is really on track with our plan and anticipated if we continue on with our one-to-one.
Can I ask you, looking at the future of what we choose as far as devices, I know that the testing window is very long for our students, and a lot of the reason from what I'm hearing from the front line is it's because of the limitations of computers that can be used for the state test. Looking down the road, especially at the high school level, will we be purchasing devices that can have a broader usability so that they can be used for testing?
Yeah, one of the things we were kind of excited about as we, going back a year or two, is that we've been told all along that one-to-one devices could be used for testing, which is a big need. In an ideal world, we would have a device that would serve both purposes. Well, as it's come about, no one has seen that work yet. And no district that I know of is doing any testing on iPads because, or any other alternative devices.
You're not using one-to-one for testing in any district.
And so I would just explain, let's say that it worked, we haven't seen it work. I've got principals that tell me, there's no way I'm going to test Johnny on this iPad with a nine-and-a-half inch display, and Suzie on this computer with a 19-inch display. I just, you know, they don't, yeah, I don't see it happening. So we're hopeful...
But Johnny's comfortable with his machine. I don't know, I guess it's back to the...
Well, here's the problem too, though, and I think that that's where, is there's a security issue of the fact that you, you can't take that device, remove it from the student, cleanse it, and put it into a testing environment. And that's what we've found around the state. They can't take a one-to-one without removing and taking away that device, and then it defeats the one-to-one when it's their primary textbook. So what they've found is, we've had to have two types of systems, a one-to-one and a testing lab. And that's not what we all thought, because unfortunately, you can't walk in with a device and go, this is testing mode, and it locks everything down for Johnny. What reality happens is Johnny has to check whatever he has at the door and use what's in case. And even in our own district, I had a parent this year that had contacted me because they had been utilizing an iPad for their daily use. They had tested for the preliminary version of the FSA on a desktop, and then when they took the FSA, they took it on a laptop, and there wasn't anything that was the same. And that's not just Citrus County, that's the reality. And that's really, I think, just gonna be the challenge that we have. One-to-one and testing are not entirely compatible when it comes to the device.
I'm losing keyboarding skills. I'm using the iPad, you know?
You're right.
You're right.
Yeah, yeah, you know, computer-based testing is a whole topic in and of itself. It obviously has not gone as smoothly as the state had hoped it would go.
But we did okay, didn't we?
I think we did as well as anybody, you know?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Well, and thankful for our district staff, our school staffs. But to answer your question just about, where I think we would be remiss not looking at other devices out there in terms of cost and function, and hopefully the suitability for computer-based testing.
Well, what I've heard from students and staff, the need for a USB port, they're having, because they do so many projects with those devices, to go from being able to share on a computer that the teacher, you've got your docking station set up, it's wired into the projector, but for the student who's developed their presentation, their PowerPoint, or their iMovie, or whatever, on their machine, it's hard for them at this point, because they don't have the capability of connecting directly. So it becomes, you take yours off, let me hook mine in, and it's, the downtime is crazy. And I've watched one student after another, and looking at the minutes that are lost in that classroom while each student is getting up there to set up their own computer so that they can do a presentation, it's not, it's not a good use of time.
It's not been perfect, but it is improving. Now, one of the things I'm hopeful for, you know, there's a device called Apple TV that's now $69, so relatively inexpensive. They just changed the technology with that device, I'll say, within the last number of months, where it can now do peer-to-peer. So the device doesn't have to work on your network, doesn't have to be on the same network as the iPad, so to speak, to broadcast to the video projector. It works directly within the classroom, so the iPad is communicating directly with Apple TV, going directly to the projector. Eliminates a lot of complexity and a lot of unreliability. So I just ordered two, I'm gonna send one to Central Ridge Elementary, Mr. Jakes, teacher there, that, working with iPads in his classroom, have him try it out, we're gonna test it out. So we're hopeful that things like that will...
And there's tremendous amount of software solutions that we've had. Actually, using a USB isn't even conducive to most of the way teachers are teaching anymore because of the cloud-based system. They don't even really share in that manner. And those that have, that's really an old use of technology.
But being honest, the, some of the software solutions that have not worked as...
But the Windows and other base solutions haven't either.
No, no, no.
So it's not like there's a device solution that has accomplished that.
I'm hoping that what I just described will be helpful. Yeah, we've used two different software solutions, one called Air Server, one called Reflector, and both have just not gone as smoothly as we hoped. But just to kind of follow up one other thing, is we have a District Technology Standards Committee, and really, I hope to convene that group once again, to get input from stakeholders, make sure that represents technology people, curriculum people, you know, just all the players and stakeholders, and begin talking about, you know, what is best, what are we hearing, what are our students saying, and what do we need moving forward. So we're gonna be working on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I, you know, would just add that Dan Koch, who a lot of you I'd sent out information on, just received the Apple Distinguished Educator. There's approximately 2,000 in the world, there is about 100 in the United States alone. And if you've taken a look at his video, you can see the type of implementation. And he talks about how the national leaders in curriculum teaching and integration of utilizing device, that they still believe that the device that we're doing in Citrus County is still the most appropriate versatile device. And so it's interesting, because Dan and I had had a conversation on that just this week, and he was very adamant that he felt like Citrus County was successful in the things that we were doing as a result of the direction we've been going and the consistency we've had.
And it applies to you for...
Yeah.
No, it's not. It's truly, it's, you know, Dr. Gettys, the team.
Looking at, again, back to that high school issue there, are we going into the high schools with the iPads?
Yes.
Okay, so will those iPads have the Microsoft Suite application? I know that they have that for iPhones.
Yeah, Microsoft Suite is available with, free actually now, on the iPad. So they actually can get a OneDrive account from Microsoft, which is kind of like the Google Drive of, you know, the cloud storage, as well as you can download a Word and Excel, there's free apps, you know, for the iPad.
Great, thank you.
And I will say that there are a variety of other things, you know, our schools use Google Drive, they use Google Apps, and so the one device, as well as other devices, can access multiple resources like that.
The day of using one type of suite to accomplish it, I'm today, and this is the comment, I've got Word pages and I'm also just using the Dropbox app, all to read a Word document.
Has our one-to-one been absolutely 100% pain-free? No, you know, there's, it's been challenges and bumps, but I heard a quote I thought was pretty cool recently attributed to Albert Einstein. He says, "With great difficulty comes opportunity." And so I think we've realized a lot of opportunities, you know, in our classrooms. Truly, I could not have been more proud walking Bureau Chief around, showing him our classrooms in a way of ways, teachers are teaching, students are learning, they're engaged. It wasn't the orderly desk in rows, teacher at sage of the stage kind of scenario, but that's not where we're at right now. So it was really, really cool, and you should be proud, you know, as board members and leaders of what's happening in our schools. I certainly am. Now, positives, this, we are seeing those changes in teaching and learning. We're definitely moving towards a digital curriculum. We're seeing a shift towards paperless workflow and assignments. We're now able to provide supplemental resources and learning experiences that we could never do before. Extending learning opportunities and we're preparing the students for life beyond the school. So I think those are all positive things. Now, what I wanted to also do is take this opportunity to educate you on just a couple of other technology resources and how they're being used. So one of the things we got, I believe, in the last semester quarter, I can't quite recall, but this digital learning grant, it was kind of like leftover race to the top money, and so not a relatively large amount, 75,000, but basically, we're using that for simple K-12, which is online self-directed instruction for teachers and staff. Great resource.
This is a...
Yeah, okay. Eback packed software, which is what all of our middle schools, some of our elementary schools are using for that paperless workflow, and so we're able to fund that for them this coming year. We're getting ready to do some somewhat massive, awesome summer iPad training for teachers. The new teachers receiving devices, fourth, sixth, ninth grade, as well as any other teacher that wants to attend. Those dates are taking place in May and in June, and it's pretty much teacher-led, teacher-directed, based on the experience and the awesome teachers, the Dan Koches of Citrus County that are doing good things in classrooms. So that's that digital learning grant. We received a digital classrooms plan grant. A big part of that was used to fund performance matters this year, and so that's already gone, as you heard Mr. Blocker's presentation, that's a consideration for this coming year. We purchased a lot of headphones, keyboards, and not nearly that amount of keyboards. And then we're going to purchase computers, computer cards, bandwidth upgrades, as our bandwidth increases, we upgrade that, and so we've used a portion of that money to pay for those upgrades. As we were sitting in the meeting earlier today, I was actually monitoring internet bandwidth on my device there, and we kind of peaked around 10:35, 10:40 at 500. Shortly after that, it dropped down to 250. That is something that my staff monitors, we all monitor it all the time, daily. I actually have a screen on my desktop that's just on all the time with that, especially around testing times, we look at that. But I can tell you that come July 1, I'm gonna be recommending we, again, do an internet bandwidth upgrade, and hopefully we can fund it out of a digital classrooms plan money, or hopefully additional monies will be received. plan money, or hopefully additional monies we'll be receiving from the state. Problem with that is, that's a kind of a, I don't know how to describe it, like if you grow into that, it's something you have to then sustain from that point forward. So we get all this special funding, which is great, you know, when you got it, but one day if it goes away, you're stuck with this additional expense that you as a district then have to sustain. And to be honest, you can't, something you can't go backwards on once you've, you know, gone forward on it.
Doctor Gettis, when it comes to bandwidth, because you and your team have done an exceptional job at trying to maintain that, and it's been a moving target, the state has far exceeded, though, expectations, I mean, to the point of like out-of-control expectations, and we've been managing, thank God, less.
I don't think any district in the state can afford what the Department of Education put out there as kind of the standard. I don't think NASA has that, you know, kind of, really, it's really out there. I told Doctor Neely when he was here, I gave him that input, I said, you know, that's awesome, but that's just completely out of reach, you know. And so I don't know who came up with those standards, but again...
I mean, that's an unfunded mandate again for them, they put that expectation on to us.
And I can tell you...
They liked it, okay, they're a point.
Exactly, thank you.
I can tell you, even with the bandwidth that we currently own, just increasing it because you've reached a certain peak is not good, that's irresponsible. You have to actively manage it. And so one of the things, it's taken, you know, my guy a lot of time to do it, he managed it, he looked for personal devices, they were doing BitTorrents and Snapchat and just a lot of this kind of stuff, and we actually communicate with schools, and we actually communicate with individual students, and he has the ability, if he sees something nefarious like that going on, he can cut them off, no question to ask. And then if they come and ask, I'm talking about personal devices now, if they come and ask somebody about it, that's an opportunity to say, listen, you know, we observed this, 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 and that's why it's happened. So we honestly try to manage what we've got, it would be, like I say, irresponsible and expensive not to do that.
What then do we have and what does the state recommend?
Oh, the state, we have 500 megabit of internet circuit right now. I think the state, even right now, would be like four gigabit or some kind of big number, but I can tell you...
And that's about a half of, we have about a half a gig. Just so that she understood what, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
They would recommend about four gig or more, and I have the numbers on my computer as specifics. But, you know, we pay roughly pre-E rate $40,000 a month, $40,000 a month for our internet and our wide area network circuits. That's a lot of money. Now, we get approximately, everything works right, 70% back of that E rate, but still, that's a big expenditure we budget 100% for just in case, and we reimburse our fund when we get reimbursed from E rate, so. But you can imagine how much it would cost if you went up exponentially.
Almost eight times.
Kind of like that, but. So I can just say this, that all the budget items you see on that screen, haven't, we haven't spent $47,000 for headphones, $44,000 for keyboards, but basically, what we're going to do is shift the remainder to computers to help us address computer-based testing, which is a primary goal of this digital classrooms plan. So at this point, I can tell you, we'll be purchasing 125 to 150 digital computers that will be on, notebook computers will be on carts, will provide the schools to continue to help with classroom testing. Then, recently, we received word of a digital learning support grant. I think this is something Mr. Blocker had alluded to, that's in parts of the budget, you know, for the coming year, but not in other versions of the budget. But basically, we wanted you to see how we're using that to fund, you know, learning systems, educational software in the district, Brain Pop Gizmo, probably items you've heard of, E2020, Play-Doh, Ed Options and that sort of thing. I don't know if you want to address that, make your corner that do it.
Well, they basically, this, I'm sorry. This grant that we basically heard from about a couple of weeks ago offered us with three opportunities. One, to increase the bandwidth, two, to basically cover some software needs to promote digital learning, and then the third was to actually provide hardware. So in our conversations, we knew that these were some reoccurring costs for edgenuity, Play-Doh and Ed Options for course recovery, credit retrieval. We basically looked at using these dollars because our Title VI funds had not come through this year, so again, it's a plan for this coming year.
And that's it. It's not 1:30.
Thank you very much.
So I want to just say I'm excited about, you know, instructional technology in our school district, the challenge, and it's an ongoing challenge just supporting this technology with the numbers and the amount that we've got out there. And so I know your mind's with that, there's a lot of needs out there. But my door is always open, I encourage you to come visit, ask questions, call, and I'll help any way I'm able to.
Thank you.
Mr. Clutter, you've got some information maybe to share with us.
Mr. Heber did respond to me, and I appreciate that. As you know, E, English Language Arts at the elementary level has a Reading Street textbook. Mathematics, it is a Go Math workbook, so it's basically that consumable item as far as their major tool of instruction. The science, as I said, is a National Geographic textbook, and then the social studies, we've had for many, many years, the consumable newspaper document that they use at the elementary level. So again, as far as take-home textbooks, if there's an assignment in Reading Street that the students would actually be given, they would probably take that home, or the science. So again, it's depending upon whether it's a resource for homework or if it's actually needed, but a tear-out for the workbook would actually be provided. Yes, even juniors and seniors for home education actually have to go through an annual evaluation of their home education work. Now specifically, are those high school requirements as dictated by the Florida Department of Education? I'm going to find that out for you. Legislation, though, Florida statute spells out specifically what that portfolio has to include for parents, so I'll provide that information to you. Also, just wanted to kind of share with the board is that I know you've had a lot of inquiries about House Bill 7069 in regards to the governor's signature on that to become law. And so in Ed Services, we actually sat down and went through the whole bill, and we basically talked about what the impact was going to be in regards to our finishing our school year out. Mrs. Himmel had provided some updates to our school community in the district last Friday, but I can just tell you that we're getting some plans in place that if we don't have test scores back for seniors or for grade three students, and we were now, now met as of this morning with all three levels of principals, Mr. Heber, and I met with elementary and high school principals last Friday to talk about the components to the law, and then also with middle schools this morning with the principals. So again, we're going to look for our next meeting, which is the Florida Organization of Instructional Leaders on May 6th and 7th, and that is where the Department of Education will come out with some clarifications. But depending upon that day and whether we're going to get some specific guidance on there, we're starting to make some plans because we've got some real good conversations going on right now for our grade three promotion, which would basically be dictated by that FSA ELA results, and then also our end-of-course exams at the high school level and also for middle schools. So I just wanted to share with you is that we're having conversations with the principals and then really looking at the work for next year, just basically about the whole double testing. We basically have asked the principals to go back, we basically do not have a final exam at the high school level. It is a nine-week cumulative test that does not, in essence, as the bill states, cumulative in the course. Ours is basically by the semester, the nine weeks cumulative. So we're going to continue on by administering them, but the principals are going to be having some conversations with those high school principals, because again, the ten of the law is not the...